Please. Well, the first item is the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the minutes of April 3rd, we did not have a meeting last month, so these minutes go back to April 3rd. Are there any additions or corrections from the board? Is there a second? It's been moved in second and that we approve. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The minutes are approved. Okay, the first and only item on the agenda tonight is 409, 411, 413, East Lancaster Avenue. You may be in.
Thank you, Mr. Gosin. Good evening. Fred Fromholdt, I'm an attorney and I represent the applicant. When we were last before you, Jamie John of our office was here, not I, and she had presented the plans to you. And I think you've seen this particular plan on a couple of occasions. And we just wanted to give you a little bit of a description as to where we have been on this. We had filed our preliminary plan application and you had reviewed it. And we had made certain modifications to the plan that attempted to address concerns that we heard from the planning commission. We, as you know, were required to obtain variances from the zoning board in order to implement this plan. And involves the property at 409, 11, and 13, East Lancaster Avenue. Then I believe you're all familiar with that property. It's across the street from the park. There are three buildings there that have variance history to them. They're all zoned residentially, but they're all used and have been used commercially pursuant to approvals, permits that have been issued by Radnor Township. And our client, the Emerson Group, has acquired these properties with the idea that these properties would be consolidated into their home office location, which is where their home office is. And Patrick Gibbons is here from the Emerson Group and can answer any questions you have about the user of this property. But the use that was approved by the zoning board was for consolidated office use, which would be available for however long this is used by Emerson for their office purposes. And they have no expiration date. They're here to stay and their principals are in this area. So they're looking to be in Radnor Township and had acquired these properties specifically for that purpose. The proposal for the properties is the demolition of the middle property with the continuation of the wings, if you will, which are existing buildings, very nice buildings. And we think that in terms of what is being retained for the character of this site are these two important buildings. And we believe that Paul Bloomfield, the architect, has designed a very nice connector addition. Nevertheless, because it was a consolidation, it was required to obtain a new variance from the zoning board. And that variance not only was for the use, but also for the parking in the front yard. And that was a requirement. There was also, there is also a zoning requirement that applies to buildings in excess of 5,000 square feet for a loading space for these buildings. And we had presented it to the zoning board saying that we didn't believe that we needed a variance for it, but if a variance was required, we sought that variance from them and put on testimony in that regard. And the decision came down that approved the plan is presented and did not treat that as being a variance that was necessary for the loading. And the basis for it is that we're only adding 2,000 square feet of floor area. We're not even adding 5,000 square feet of floor area to the commercial uses, the commercial floor area that now exists on the site. When we were last before you also, we believed that our impervious surface was essentially the same. We're non-conforming to impervious surface. We were proposing to maintain that non-conformity. In fact, we, as a result of the last calculation, are decreasing the impervious surface about 5%. So there will be more green space. And I know that was a concern that had been expressed by various members of this commission, that there'd be a reduction in the amount of impervious surface. I think you had suggested 10% as a target number that the applicant should look to achieve. And what we have done is achieved a significant portion of that. But it's also important for this use and getting the critical mass for the use in the floor area that we preserve the parking that we have on the plan. So we also, prior to going to the zoning board, had this plan considered by the Board of Commissioners. And the Board of Commissioners had actually taken a vote in support of our application that was presented to the zoning board. I believe you had also voted positively, conditionally, conditionally, that there'd be a reduction in the impervious surface by 10. We weren't able to achieve that, as I had mentioned to you. So, but in other regards, I think that you, as we saw, value in what was proposed and attempted to be achieved for this site. And long term, we believe this proposal will preserve the character of the site. There is a rendered site plan, if I can get that somewhat square on the screen. And it shows 409, 411, 413. One of the things that I would like to have Frank Tavani, our traffic engineer, talk to you about is the circulation, because there had been a question that was raised in the traffic engineer's review on this particular application as to what the appropriate flow was, whether it would be clockwise as we have proposed it or whether it would be counterclockwise. And we believe in strongly that the way we have proposed it, we've looked at it operationally and practically in every way. And Frank is here to talk to you about that. But a couple of things. One, there is a tree, a fairly wide diameter tree that is on the corner there. Not in such good health. It's very close to where the sidewalks will go. And the grading for the sidewalks will have significant impact on that tree. Lisa Thomas from Black and Thomas Panzack is here and can talk to you about that. She has met with the township barberist at the site. And I think there is agreement that, given the condition of the tree and this proposed project sidewalks and our entry drive there, that it would make sense to remove that tree. I think the practical benefits from doing that will be, we'll be able to have better site distance, better grading. One of the things that I think we're able to achieve here is that we will have grading up from the sidewalk rather than a retaining wall along the sidewalk. As you walk along Lancaster Avenue, you know, anytime that you're walking between the street and a retaining wall, there is that sense of modest entrapment or confinement where if you can get off up on a natural grade, it's a more comfortable position to be in. So we think we're able to achieve improvements in the grading between the sidewalk and the parking. We're also showing significant planning that would be on the Lancaster Avenue side of that parallel parking, that while it is between the building and the street, it's at the rear of the building. All our parallel parking is at the rear of the building. So that when you enter the site on the west side of 409, East Lancaster Avenue, you are then going to the rear of the site, which is the front of the property. And we can show you some of the elevations, that that is the front door. That's where the major portion of the parking is. That's where visitors will park. That's where people will enter the building. It's only a back door, if you will, that is at the rear of the building. One of the things that you can see on the plan is a walkway that had been suggested between Lancaster Avenue and the building. And while we anticipate very little, if any, but very little pedestrian traffic that would go from the sidewalk to the building, there is that pedestrian walkway that would enable those pedestrian trips, no matter how few. As you go around the building, there had been a comment, you may have recalled seeing in the review, with some concern as to this particular island and interfering or creating some type of obstruction, if you will, to fire vehicles were they to come in the site and around there. A couple of comments in that regard. First, there is a very wide driveway on the east side of the site where, and a parking area for the adjoining property now used by a dentist, for dentist's office, where fire vehicles can come in and very easily get to the rear of the site. To the extent that there would be any benefit to easing that island, that's something that could be done. It could be looked at. You could have grass there without trees. You could have some low-growing vegetation that would not interfere with any fire vehicle. You could have some malleable curb or some other treatment there that would create that little green island, but not have it curb. So there are possibilities there as well. We think the landscape plan is quite beautiful. There are some trees that are along the back. The intention is to preserve those trees and add to them, as you can see on the landscape plan, so that that would create a nice green screen buffer, whatever is an appropriate name for that, between this particular property and the adjoining property. We can answer whatever questions you would like. I can try to answer them. We have our professionals here. We have Frank Tavani, our traffic engineer, Joe Maggiulli from Mammonian Inc., who is here, our engineer Lisa Thomas, and our architect Paul Bloomfield. Paul, if I could call on you just a moment to just talk about the elevations.
Could I just ask you a quick question?
Surely.
The letters from Gannett Fleming and so forth have a lot of comments and zoning issues and things like that.
Happy to go through that.
Okay. Rather than listen, well, unless the board wants to listen to the other professionals, I'm thinking we should maybe go through the letter first? Okay. All right. How about we start with Roger Phillips' letter? Now, you received two variances from the zoning board. And from your comments, you just mentioned that, whoops, sorry, that you didn't think you needed a variance for the offloading, the truck spot?
That is correct.
Is that what they said, or is that your interpretation?
Well, we had specifically, that was specifically mentioned. Where on page four of the testimony, it was noted, the applicant also seeks a variance from Code Section 280-105F to locate parking within the front yard and any other special exception or variance relief that may be required for the proposed improvements.
Yeah, I'm talking about the truck loading.
Right.
Spot.
And then, so, but we, as, we had described the loading at pages 82 and 83 of the testimony and how that was provided at the rear of the property. It's a practical matter like all buildings. We are in the Villanova Center, our office is, and...
But the circulation in Villanova Center is superior to what you have here. My thought is...
The loading, for, this is an office building. So we don't have the loading requirements that we would have if it was a food establishment or some retail establishment with larger trucks that had to make deliveries.
But you still would have UPS trucks.
You'd still have UPS trucks, which incidentally now unload in Lancaster Avenue for three buildings. In fact, we have...
So they park on Lancaster and carry the packages in?
That's exactly what they do. And in fact, I've got, the day we were out there taking some photographs for the zoning hearing, we had trucks that were parked, a truck that was parked in Lancaster Avenue. It also straddled the sidewalk along Lancaster Avenue. So what they would do is they would go to the back. And like, even though we, as many office buildings, have areas where somebody could park all the UPS, all the FedEx trucks, they pull in, park for a minute behind cars wherever they may be.
Yeah, but here's the problem. You still have to comply with 255-30, either via a waiver from us or a zoning variance.
Well, 250, well, let me say, we had, and this always is a question. The waiver is only required under the SALDO if, in the first instance, the loading is required. Because the SALDO requirement is a design requirement, as to what the design of the loading space will be. The SALDO doesn't require the loading space. It's the zoning ordinance that requires the zoning space. The SALDO says how that loading space is to be designed. So we had presented it to the zoning board that we didn't, we hadn't sought in our application to the zoning board. There had been no determination by the zoning officer that there was any requirement that we needed to meet. Our addition was 2,000 square feet. Didn't meet the 5,000 square foot threshold for building. We have three buildings now with separate deliveries to all three buildings. We're going to have one building there, not three.
And what's the total square footage of that building?
I, off the top of my head, I don't know that. But I believe the increase in square footage is...
No, not increase, total.
I understand.
Okay.
Yeah. The total square footage, I believe, is more than 5,000 square feet.
That's what I thought. Fifty-five, okay.
Yeah. It's more than 5,000 now, and in the future, it will be more than 5,000. So we took the position that the zoning was not required. If it was, we were going to, we were seeking a variance from the board. So we have no determination from the zoning officer to the contrary. And I understand that the comment for the SALDO waiver or zoning related to the SALDO section, not the zoning section, we don't believe that we need that, any relief.
All right. Well, go ahead, Joe.
Well, one quick question about the existing building to be torn down, 2011, has a basement. Not 2011, I'm sorry, 411 has a basement. Is this new structure in any way going to have a basement?
Paul?
Why don't we come up, use the mic?
There is a small basement at both 409 and 413. So our intent would be to connect those two, at least to provide access for utilities and so forth at the new construction between them.
So the basement will be continuous from all three buildings?
Yes.
Well, one building?
At least in part, yes.
Okay.
Okay, why don't we try to go through the letter here?
So if we're on page two and the, page one is the order of the zoning board. Page two says, "The applicant's indicated in the subdivision application that the following waivers are being sought." And I believe that it has been noted now that there is no waiver that is required under 255-29A7. I think that was the, that was in one of the review letters. But we had put an island in in the back where an island had not been before. And I believe we meet that requirement.
Which number was that? 255?
Dash 29A7.
A7. So you have your island now, so you're complying with that.
Yeah, yeah. And I think the review letter recognizes that. And then 255-29A8, parking lots with less fewer than 30 spaces shall not have grading and that exceeds 5%. And parking lots with more than 30 spaces shall not have grading exceeding 3%. I believe that we can comply with that requirement, Joe, to the extent, or no, we can't. So we're still looking for a variance.
What is your grading?
I'm sorry, a waiver from it.
What is your...
What is the grade?
Right, it's in excess of 5%.
All right, why don't we have him come up?
All right, Joe, come on up.
And quickly answer that. You say in excess of 5. How much in excess?
Joe, can you pull the site plan out and show them where that is in the back corner of the site?
We're looking in this area back here. And this is the proposed grading here. We can achieve the 3%, but this is the best we can do. Right now, it's in excess of 5%.
How much in excess? Do you know?
I don't know off the top of my head. In some areas, it's very steep, in some areas, it's very gradual.
The entire back lot, is that all out of compliance or just a certain area of it?
For the most part, all of it is. Across the whole back of all three properties, there's parking. Everything slopes in this general direction.
Towards the building?
Yes, correct.
So you're in excess of 5 and you're not complying with that one. And then the 255-29A12A, you're not complying with that? Because your exits aren't 12 feet wide?
Right, and that's only in this section right here. There's an existing driveway here. It's non-conforming now. The best we can do is 11 point, well, the worst place is right here. It's 11.29.
How about the entrance in? How wide is that?
It's 16 feet at the mouth and next down to about 12, 12 feet in between the buildings, which meets your regulations.
It is 12 all the way through?
Yes, correct.
Okay.
Yeah, it's just along the property line, which is all McAdam even for that 7.5 feet on the other side, next to the doctor's office.
The zoning part there...
Well, number one, there's an acknowledgement that the applicant received a variance for the use. On number two, 35A4C, the buildings...
Well, it's one building now, so you don't have that.
Right, is an existing building, existing condition, and we are continuing that non-conformity. So we're not exacerbating that in any way. That building remains and will be using it. Number three, the non-conforming impervious surface is being reduced from 68.96 to 63.51. So it's not quite a 5.5% reduction, but it is a reduction in impervious surface. We're doing better than simply maintaining the non-conformity.
Okay, and 104C is the loading dock area that we were discussing earlier, correct?
That's right, and as...
Okay, 280-105D, that's about lighting? I assume you will be able to comply with that?
Yes, we have submitted a lighting plan. And I think the last revising plan was a day after.
Okay, all I need is, yes, you can confirm.
But yes, that's a, we'll comply.
So 112C, areas of track containing slopes deeper than 14% must be outlined.
We will comply.
And of course, your signs will all be in accordance?
The signs will comply, yeah.
Okay.
And signage will be important, as you know, for this site to identify the...
Directional, right.
Well, I guess both, a street sign to identify the location of the entry for this business that's on the site. And then directional signage to implement the circulation pattern.
All right, the next section, the subdivision and land development there. You have 15 items. Can you comply with all of them?
Well, I'm going down, we're not proposing any streetlights on number two. But we'll comply with one, three, four. On five, it says, "The plan appears to comply." And we, I think we agree that a waiver is not required. The parking lots, less than 30 with the grading, we have requested that waiver. I was incorrect when I said I thought we could comply. We do need that waiver, as Joe has just described it to you. On number seven, we have that width except in that one location on the east side of 413, the building in 413, which is our existing condition. And then on eight, we will comply. Nine, we believe that we comply with that, with the plans that we have submitted. But certainly, we will comply with that. I said eight, except for that area... Yeah, well, eight is the, yeah, we will, I'm sorry, on eight, we will comply. Yeah, we do not need the waiver on eight. Yeah, we can do the 22 feet.
Excuse me, that property is owned by someone else? You will have, you will have a dentist?
That's our property as well. It's just not part, it just is not really being affected by this application other than the easement, driveway easement that goes in. And if there's a desire that we have the 22-foot aisle there, we can provide that.
For the board's reference, this is in the upper left-hand corner of the property heading west is where this comment refers to, right there.
No, I was asking about the other side. That's the 12-foot side.
The comment that we're speaking about right now references the upper left-hand corner, leaving that property to the west.
There is, while it is not proposed as part of the circulation, there is an openness of the drive there. So it provides what you might say is an emergency or another possible access. But it's not part of the circulation pattern that really is proposed for this development.
Did I hear you say that that is the same landowner?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
But I don't want to leave this point because we're talking about entrance and exits.
Yes.
The other side, where the dentist is, or the other dentist, the 415, that is not property of the group. That's not...
That is correct. It is not.
And I was at the site today, and there is no distinction between where 413 ends and 415 begins. It strikes me that everyone entering the property on 415 will just drift across and come in that side of the parking lot in the back.
Okay, that is very, that is very much not intended here.
But I think it happened all day today.
Yeah, well, what is the occupancy right now of 413? That's vacant, right?
It's vacant. Oh, so...
Microphone, please.
So we told the dentist, "While the parking lot's empty, feel free to use the lot because we don't use it." So anybody who is coming in, more than likely... So anybody who is coming in, more than likely, is going to the dentist's office. Maybe, you know, a car or two from us may park there, but the vast majority of the movement in and out of that lot that borders the dentist's office is for the dentist.
I'm just speculating that if there's no, you know, markings on the pavement, no physical barrier, that people are gonna enter, because it's gonna be the most inviting way in. It's twenty two feet wide. The other way in is twelve feet wide. And it's also the best way for fire trucks to get in, too.
I would agree with that. It is the best way for fire trucks to get in.
As long as, as long as there's no permanent barrier, et cetera.
Right. I, I think it's important to both properties. It's important to our client that there is visibility and signage at the point of entry. And frankly, with that tree coming down, there's another benefit to that, that you can have a better and more visible sign that isn't interfered with by, by a tree that is in great decline, and the streetscape can be, I think, enhanced if new trees are planted in better locations in its place. But there will be a sign for Emerson there at that location. There will be no sign at the dentist's driveway. And I think it's important to the dentist, in having discussions with the dentist, that Emerson is not using their driveway entrance. We don't have that right from the dentist, and what we are providing the dentist, as shown on the plan, is an easement in this location on our property to come out in what would be an improved point of ingress and egress there, and he would be, we both would be using the egress, we'd be sharing the egress. The ingress from Lancaster Avenue at that location would be for the dentist's office with, and his sign is there at that location, so.
Mr. Fromholme, just a question over here. On that, what I just heard you say is you're giving the dentist an easement to get out, but you don't have an easement to use that driveway for anybody that wants to come in?
At this point, we do not.
I mean, why wouldn't, why don't we, why wouldn't you just have a cross easement between both properties? Because it's, it's gonna be used in, it's gonna be used in, and it's gonna be used out.
Well, and I think the reality is it won't. This, this is an office building for Emerson. You don't have, you have very few visitors coming. There will be visitor parking for those very few that may come, and Patrick can talk to you about that. But it's an office building. Want people to enter at the, the main entry for the office and to circulate around the office, park, and the visitors parking at the office. We don't want people using that dentist's driveway, and the dentist doesn't want people using that driveway. Is it physically possible to do that? At this point, there is no barrier that would preclude it, but it's a property right, and.
Yeah, but, I mean, other than your, other than Emerson's employees, anybody else coming to that building, they're gonna pull in the first driveway that they see, which is gonna be.
I, and, and we, we don't think that's so. I mean, they're not gonna.
How are you gonna stop it? I don't, I don't.
Why would they pull into a driveway at a location where that's the entry to the dental office, but the entry to the Emerson Group's office is at the driveway where they're signing?
If it's, if it's signed, that, that makes sense, but it just, I don't understand why you wouldn't have a cross easement. If you're, you're giving them the right to come out of that, why aren't they giving you the right to occasionally use the in? Because people are gonna go, whatever they see first, they're gonna go, pull in the driveway.
I'll, I'll let Fred answer the first part of the question, but where the people go, I, I can speak to because I experience it. So what we do is, because we only have one receptionist, one reception area, and it's in the four oh seven building, so there's no addresses that are given out to anybody anywhere in our, of the, of the further, well, to the, the east or the west location that we have now. We own four oh five, four oh seven, four oh nine. Everyone is directed by, by address to come to the four oh seven building because that's where they're received. So rarely, if ever, does anyone pull into the four oh nine driveway that exists, except for our employees who know to pull into there. So the employees are easy enough to train. It's the people from the outside that concern you that don't know enough not to pull into that first driveway. Well, they're always being directed to come into four oh seven first anyway, because that's where they're received. Even when we have this big, bigger building, we're gonna ask anybody who does visit to come and be received in four oh seven. So the practice and the reality is, they, they always pull into that four oh seven lot first.
But you agree, there's, there's not gonna be any marking at that common driveway. There's no marking, there's no separation, it's just gonna be a twenty two foot wide driveway, essentially, with your driveway and the dentist's driveway. It's just gonna be a wide open driveway, right? Nobody's gonna be there directing, there's not gonna be different color paving, it's just gonna be a wide open driveway.
The, the plan shows that, so I guess it's like any situation where you have adjoining properties, and might somebody that is coming in to the dentist pull entire lot? That's a possibility. Might somebody who's coming to our address pull into that? That's a possibility, but there are a lot of possibilities. The dentist does not want, I think, fairness to the dentist, the, the traffic that would be coming through that entrance in front of his building, he's happy to have that as a shared point of egress, not as happy at the moment to have it as a shared point of ingress. So what you have is you have a private property interest. Might some future owner of that property feel differently about it? That's a possibility, but, you know, we.
Yeah, I, I don't wanna belabor it, I'm just trying to clarify what, what the cross easements are or not.
Right, right.
And now I think we understand what they are not.
Right, right. So it's an easement that's being granted, we, we don't have an ingress easement on that drive, right?
I believe we're at ten. Although, I guess we already addressed that, basically.
Yeah, we, we did address that, right. So, we, we don't believe variance is required, and we don't need that, and if we don't need it, then we don't need a waiver from that section. Eleven, we will comply.
Who, you don't think it's needed, right?
Correct.
Okay, just so I clarify, who thinks it's not needed?
Right, and I would submit that the, we haven't had any zoning interpretation, where the zoning board approved our plan as presented. And one of the requirements for the relief is demonstration that you meet the requirements of code. We specifically brought that up, the, and talked about the loading and how the loading would occur in the back, and we think we have the UPS and the FedEx type deliveries, and that we don't need a large dedicated loading spaces in the same way that some retail establishment might need that.
Actually, let me ask you one thing on that. When you went before the zoning board initially, was it advertised for that specific section also?
I believe the answer is no.
Okay, so really, if it wasn't advertised, they couldn't make a decision on it, could they?
Well, I, I, I think implicit in their determination was that if you don't need a variance, you don't apply to the zoning board and say, hey, there are five sections of the code that I don't think we need variances, do you agree with us? What you do is you submit your plan, you submit what you believe, as you have been advised by the zoning reviewers, what you need by way of variance for your plan. Let's not say that the zoning officer couldn't miss a variance, that's certainly a possibility. But I think it had come up, that question somewhere, and it may have been you in one of the reviews, and, and so therefore, we had talked to the zoning board and made it part of our plan as to how we would handle deliveries, and I had cited you the pages in the testimony where we did that.
Okay, go ahead.
The.
Sidewalks and pedestrian paths will be lighted, I assume, that's okay?
Yep, yep, that's fine, we comply, we'll comply with number twelve, when the trees, when the outdoor collection stations provided for garbage and trash, when indoor collection is not provided, our collection station, collection stations to be screened from view, this must be shown on the plans.
Where is that?
It is not. Pardon? It is not shown on this site. What we would propose would be that there'd be a single collection station at four oh seven, which is the existing building to the west, the adjoining building where trash is now picked up at that location, and we would seek to have a single point of trash pickup rather than multiple points of.
And I assume a large trash truck would come in, and you'd be using a dumpster?
No.
No dumpsters?
So, a, a, a large trash truck backs up off the street, so it backs up, and it's so, so it's just out of the street and in the beginning of our driveway, so then it's facing forward. And what they do is, as volume increases, as we added buildings through the years, they add totes. So they, they have, there's probably about nine there now.
What do you mean totes?
You ever see the ones that, that residents have in front of their homes?
Oh, they cans, yeah.
Yeah, the cans that, that have the lids on them, and, and they pull them right to the front of the driveway with the, with the trash truck off the street in our driveway, but it doesn't come all the way back.
Since you're going to give up a couple of driveways, does that mean when the trash is picked up, people won't be either able to come in or come out briefly out of the property?
In that spot, yeah. They would have to deal with the trash truck for a couple of minutes, but I.
How much space do you have now in the building you're occupied?
That's a good question.
How much space is there? In two, in oh seven now, that you have, how much office space do you have now?
There's, there's three buildings, and you ask me, do I know the square footage? The answer would be no.
Well, I'm trying to calculate, you have nine tote bags for that, totes for that. You're gonna add another five thousand square feet. Is it equal? So can you say you're gonna have nine more, so now you're gonna have eighteen? Seven more, five more?
Okay, I'll answer. So, so right now, we have three buildings, we're gonna have five, so I think we're gonna have to add two fifths more, so two fifths of nine.
Well, so you're adding three more, not two more.
Two fifths of nine.
No, no. You're gonna add three buildings. Because you're consolid, it's two, but you're consolidating, you started with three.
We're using three buildings.
Right.
We're gonna be, so in essence, we're gonna have the use of, let's say, lots, five lots.
Okay.
One of your buildings is vacant.
We believe it'll be the same amount of capacity of employees, therefore trash usage, that we have on the other three lots. So we've taken on two more additional lots, and we think the, the amount of employees will be, when, when we're at capacity someday, it won't be right away, when we get to capacity someday, that we will add two fifths more employees than we have now.
Oh, let's, for argument's sake, let's just say you're gonna have twelve cans, twelve trash cans, totes, whatever you call them.
Yep.
Are they all gonna be lined up in the back, or do you have, are they kept in the building?
No, they're, they're in the back, and we have a slated area back there, and if you, if you ever walked our facility, everything we do is top-notch and beautified, so.
Well, I'm, I'm just questioning, if you have twelve totes, why you wouldn't have a dumpster at that point?
The, the trash service prefers the totes. They say it, it, it's easier for them, so.
So you're gonna be parked there long enough, blocking your driveway for one guy, most likely, to drag out twelve totes?
There's typically three guys on the trucks, but.
Can I suggest something? I think you've identified an issue that we need a better answer. I, I don't think, Patrick, that a good answer is that we have a truck backing in and blocking that driveway. We need to come back with a better solution for you.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
One thing I thought, after I was on site today, is that in some perfect world, four oh seven would be part of this application, too.
And I understand your, your view on that.
Ninety percent of that driveway is on four oh seven.
That, that is correct, and we have an easement for that. There is, there will be improvement of the grade of that driveway at Lancaster Avenue, so I, I understand your point.
And today, when we were on site, there's a structure in the back of four oh seven that's a storage structure that's two stories tall, and I understood from what meeting we briefly had with Patrick, that that storage structure is going away. That's gonna be torn down.
The building in the back for the traffic.
That's on four oh seven property, but that might be a location, maybe you need a different trash hauler, but that might be a location for a dumpster that would service four oh seven, nine, eleven, and thirteen, and, and you could back far enough out that people could get into the parking lot.
Right. You, you've put your finger on an issue that we need to address. What we have presented, I agree, is not satisfactory on that, yeah.
All right, so. Let's move on to fourteen. Class B buffer, you're going to do that?
I believe the answer is yes, or yes.
Yes, okay.
Can you show that on your drawing, your buffer, the location?
The buffer area is at the rear of.
Use a mic, please, thanks.
The buffer, Lisa Thomas with Glack and Thomas Panzak, the buffer area is at the rear of the site. Today, there are a number of mature existing trees that will remain, and a six-foot-high solid wood fence. The ground from our site kind of rolls up two to three feet, so our site is somewhat depressed from the, the apartment site in the back, it's a little lower. So you've got a two-foot high, two to three-foot raise, and then a six-foot-high fence, so effectively you've almost got an eight-foot height of solid screening between the two properties.
And there's a buffer on the Pembroke side, too, on the other side of the fence.
Oh, on the other side? That's not on our property.
I understand, but I mean it exists. In other words, I'm trying to figure out what you could possibly plant with all the trees there.
Well, I've been looking at that, and the trees are mature trees, so to a certain degree, the trees are doing better than anything we could ever plant, and it's a very narrow area. We could put more shrubs in, but they would only benefit our side of the property, and there's that solid fence. So I, I think, basically, there's a phenomenal buffer as it is, with the existing trees and the existing wood fence.
Are they deciduous trees?
They're deciduous, there are some evergreen trees.
And dimensionally, your, your strip is so narrow, I don't see, if you plant like arbor vine, they won't live.
I, I think they won't live because of the shade, and it's a tough area to put stuff in the ground there. And it's in a pre-existing condition, it's there today, it's been there, you know, all this time, so, and we're not changing really the edge of that parking lot, and we're not changing the use of that area. It's gonna maintain and be existing parking, so there's really no change to that, to that area.
Kathy?
Yes.
We just received our landscaping plans late last week. We're partially reviewing them, I've got a few comments, but we're gonna work that out, and the township's arborists will get involved and, and look at that. We, we're not gonna have them go in and take down mature trees just to build a, a buffer to meet the code. So, so we haven't addressed this yet with the applicant, but we will, and that'll all get worked out to the arborist's satisfaction. And they have to go through shade tree through this process also.
So you'll work through that?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Any other questions about?
Not at this point, thank you.
And number fifteen is a fee in lieu, which we will pay. And then on the stormwater comments, I think Joe had said, we, did you want to talk about stormwater, one second, Joe?
Here's a handheld mic if you want to use this.
I'll be fine, thank you. Initially, when, addressing comment number one, initially when we were presenting the plans, we, we didn't do our deep test. We've since done them, completed them, and we, we have that information to present to you. The rest of the comments, we can comply with. We will provide the correct calculations, the profile, the storm system through the front of the property, and, you know, the typical comment, whenever we go and apply for our. for our grading permit, we will have our final calculations.
All right. So you will comply with all stormwater requirements?
Yes, we will. Yes, we will.
All right, thank you.
And Joe, on the last three under general comments, there should be no issue on number one and number two. And on number three, it says, "A detail the proposed retaining wall located at the rear must be provided on the plans." And there is an existing wall there, is that correct?
Yes, correct.
Right. So it's an existing wall, and its height will remain less than four feet?
Right. And what we plan on doing is filling in between. It's kind of sporadically varies in height. And what we plan on doing is kind of making it uniform as best as we can.
Okay. Any questions from the board? No? Okay. Roger, do you have any questions or comments or anything we should hear about?
I do not.
Amy?
Roger's review letter or mine?
Yours.
I'm interested in if they will comply on all the items on the...
Okay. So let's go through Amy's then.
The Gilmore and Associates memorandum of May 26th, we can go through that on a line item basis, but I think...
That's not necessary, if you just would identify what you cannot comply with.
The only one that I believe is an issue would be F6, where it says, "Revised the crosswalk within the parallel parking area to a minimum of six feet." This is the crosswalk that we're talking about in this location. I think the plan shows four feet now. Is that correct, Joe? Four feet? And from the standpoint of parking, we would lose parking spaces where at six feet, we don't at four feet. And the sidewalk, the public sidewalk requirement is four feet. We're meeting that requirement. And this sidewalk will be far less frequently used than the public sidewalk. It is just a means to get up if someone should choose to come up from the public sidewalk. But we really don't envision that we're gonna have much pedestrian traffic to this building. So we're proposing that...
So you will comply, then? Well, actually...
I'm not sure that it's... Whether there's any code requirement there, or that was just a preference that was stated, that it be six rather than four.
It's not a code requirement.
Yeah.
I'm fine with that explanation.
So it's always nice to have wide sidewalks, but we think this sidewalk works fine at four.
I have a question. It's... I see a lot of neighbors are gonna be asking questions later. But aesthetically, we've seen a proposed front view of the property. Is there a rear view, a future rear view of the property? Because right now, two of the buildings have these kind of not exactly great-looking fire escape... Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Sorry.
Maybe we can show... You have the... We can put them up here, Paul. So if you could take one minute and just describe what you have. One second.
Here's a handheld mic if you would prefer using this. Hopefully, it works.
Yeah. Okay, so the larger image is the front elevation. The rear elevation is shown on the upper left here. And you're right, currently, there are numerous fire escapes, and Bilco doors, and air conditioning condensers, and a small elevator, and other things like that, all of which will be removed. One of the advantages of consolidating these buildings is that we'll have more than one means of egress within the building, so we don't need that external egress stair. So there are two of those fire escape stairs that could be removed. We're going to have... There's an existing sleeping porch on 409. We'll have another one at 413, where we can hide some of the air conditioning equipment. We'll remove the Bilco doors that provide access to the basement currently. And we're also removing a one-story addition at the far east of the site, which is currently just a one-story bathroom addition. We'll remove that as well. And earlier, you were also talking about the side yard setback. We're removing a portion of decking that's along the dentist's side of the property as well. So we're widening that side yard setback by about four feet, and we're widening that paving area there as much as we can to that degree, too. So this is the rear elevation. We've got our principal entry here is this glassier area where employees will arrive and move through the building. We are retaining, on the far right of this image, the handicap ramp that currently provides access to 409.
Thank you, Paul. The one other item I did want to mention, and I had said that Frank Tavani is here and wanted to address the traffic flow, which is listed as item F4, where it says, "We recommend the altering of the east-west directional flow of traffic." So I would like Frank to address that for you.
Thank you, Fred. Good evening. I think it would be helpful to actually read the comment in its entirety before I start talking. So it says, "We recommend altering the east-to-west directional flow of traffic for the one-way parking aisle along the site frontage on Lancaster Avenue to flow from west to east. This would eliminate the need for vehicles to circulate the building twice in order to enter and exit the site." So you can see the premise of this suggestion is chiefly, apparently, to address the undesirable effect of having to circulate the building twice for those 14 cars. And as shown on the screen, if anyone is entering the site, as they would from the entrance driveway to the left, we believe the actual front of the site is really the rear parking, as we talked about last time, as you heard from the applicant. We don't have anyone coming to the site, except for rare occasion who are visitors. There are employees who will know where the front door is, and they will be naturally inclined to go to what appears to be the back of the site, but it's really the front of the site. So those motorists will enter, go all the way to the top left, turn right, look for parking. And if they can't find it, they will be directed either via signage or experience to make another right, head south, and then make a final right to look into the area where there's 14 spaces. So that constitutes the first circulation in that second sentence, where it says, "This would eliminate the need for vehicles to circulate the building twice in order to enter," which I just described, "and exit." I don't really know if looking for parking at the back, not finding it, and then going to the... This parking closest to Lancaster really constitutes circling the building once. It's just the natural flow. If there's no parking back there, you go to where there's additional parking. So the bigger question seems to be, what happens when those 14 vehicles, if there are 14 vehicles, park, leave at the end of the day? We'll pretend that all 14 spaces are filled. It's our belief that there will be occasion where not all 14 of those spaces will be occupied. But we'll say for the sake of argument, they are. The trip distribution of traffic is more or less 50-50 east and west on Lancaster Avenue. So seven of those 14 motorists will probably want to go to the west, because that's where they came from. Seven will want to go to the east, because that's where they came from. I'm gonna put on the easel, I'm not sure how useful it will be. I don't know if that could be zoomed... That could be zoomed in at all. But this is page 86 of the TIA, which I will mention, that page four of the Gilmore memo says, "There are no comments on, and the analysis is adequate as presented," which is a fine comment. But page 86, as you can see, shows a little bit more of the full view of what's going on in the study area. The two buildings to the center are 405 and 407. It's our belief that if some motorists... Where's the microphone? So if some motorists do enter the site, go to the desired largest 36-car parking lot, and can't find any, and then continue to the rear parking, and they came from the west, those motorists could either circulate the building again and leave, or, since there is the ability to flow in this direction, take a shorter path and actually use the driveway closest to 405. Now, again, that might be seven cars, or it might be less. So those vehicles actually do not circulate the building twice at all. They actually just circulate once, really looking for parking, so it's no circulation at all. But they don't need to circulate a second time to leave. So it's really just the potential of about seven cars that are parked here that would need to go around the building and come out to the shared driveway to turn left to exit. So that's the situation. That's what this comment was meant to address, is really those seven cars. So now we need to talk about, what's the consequence of changing the traffic flow? And did the negatives, if there are any, outweigh the positives of saving those seven motorists having to circulate the building in its entirety, which was a relatively short distance? If you do change the flow, just in this one area from west to east, as suggested, you have a couple of consequences. First, the people who are entering the site immediately need to make a decision, do I turn left or do I go straight? Some people may hesitate. If there are other motorists behind them, that could potentially cause a little bit of a backlog, which would spill back to Lancaster Avenue, which is not desirable. But it's probably unlikely that that's gonna happen every time, but it's something to keep in mind. Right now, the flow of traffic is elegant, for want of a better word. It's all right turns for circulation, and the decision point is all the way to the rear of the site, not at the front. If someone does make a left and heads east, and they come up to this point, then they either don't find a parking spot, or they pass up one or two undesirable available parking spots for whatever reason, that motorist now needs to turn left onto property that we don't control, as Mr. Fromm Huld mentioned earlier, and head north to recirculate to the back. And that motorist has to contend with whoever's leaving the site, if anyone, at the same time as any dentist entering traffic is leaving the site, either from the east turning right or from the west turning left. So this motorist who's going in this direction has to look this way, look this way, and look this way before actually proceeding safely, because those are all the potential conflicting traffic movements. Then upon doing that, they would turn left again and go to these back spaces. If they don't find any parking that either they like or is available, they need to make some multi-point turn somewhere back here to go back and recirculate again, because they can't come down south. This is a one-way, 12-foot-wide entrance driveway. So that motorist may have to go back out to Lancaster Avenue to recirculate into this front area, which we would like to avoid if possible. So those are just a few of the consequences of changing that flow. And considering that it addresses a relatively small, single-digit number of potential motorists, it seems like, on balance, maybe it's better left the way it is. It's a relatively short distance to recirculate. No one likes taking a longer path than they have to, but we're not talking about thousands of feet here. Anyone familiar with Center City knows that it's a grid network of one-way streets, and sometimes you find yourself going three blocks in order to get back where you were going. That takes minutes, and you're going 500 feet for each block. In this case, it's a shorter distance. It's more on the order of seconds than minutes. So I would respectfully request that, especially in the context of who the motorists are, they're familiar with the site, and they're familiar with where they're entering the building, that perhaps this comment could be, as stated, a recommendation, but not an admonishment.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from the board?
I just wanted to add one point to...
Actually, before you go, I have a question for you. If you can put your diagram back down.
Yes.
I'm sorry, Fred. Sorry to interrupt you there. Okay. In looking at this, with the property to the west...
Yes.
And you say that the same property owner
Yes.
has that. Why can't you make that driveway wider by lobbing off some of those gray areas there, so that you'd have...
You're talking about this driveway?
There, yes. And the next gray area in front of the building, take some of that off.
Somewhere in here?
Keep going back. That one, that one, and then further in the back.
Okay.
So you can have, say, 22 feet all the way through, or 24 feet?
Sure. That's a good question.
Physically, not there. Can't do it. You could do 15, maybe.
Okay.
Even if we could do it, there's a reason... There's a reason why perhaps we wouldn't do it. These plans are a little unhelpful with respect to how that driveway looks, especially the site plan, not to attack the site plan in any way. But... I'm sorry, can we zoom out, possibly? This is... So the driveway to the left does seem to have this valley effect, where it's between two buildings. You have a tree that's depicted. The coverage of the tree itself almost makes it look like it gets more narrow back there. It's almost an optical illusion. It's 12 feet at its most narrow point that entire way through. That's a code requirement, and that is certainly adequate for vehicles to travel through. It's important to keep in mind that Lancaster Avenue itself has 10-foot travel lanes, and there's very large vehicles that go up and down Lancaster Avenue every day, including tractor-trailers. So this is 20% wider than travel lanes on Lancaster Avenue. It's just that, since it is a one-way driveway, it does have some pinch points. It looks like it's an uncomfortable width, but it really is entirely adequate.
But is there anything that would prevent you, since that first tree there is coming out, you said,
I believe...
from making the entrance point wider?
I believe the potential problems are, there are two parking spaces immediately to the left side of 409.
Oh, I didn't know there were parking.
Yes. So that's the...
Which actually makes it worse, because you have somebody trying to get in and out of there, and it's a driveway.
And it's two spaces. And these aren't spaces like at a Wawa that turn over several times an hour, sometimes several times in a 15-minute period during lunch. These are spaces for office workers that will turn over two or three times a day at long intervals. So it's certainly not gonna be an active area in terms of parking. But...
Do you have... Are you just at the maximum amount of parking requirements?
We have 50 spaces total. I believe that's the requirement.
So you're... You can't knock out any spots at all?
And that's one of the reasons why Mr. Fromm Huld pointed out that making the crosswalk more narrow, that would eliminate potentially two spaces, or wider, rather. So no, we don't have too much to work with for code.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
These photos are illustrative of a point that had made earlier, is to where vehicles, UPS trucks, now park on the sidewalk, actually. We didn't ask them to park there. They did that on their own.
Well, the thing is, we're trying to not have people park on Lancaster Avenue.
Absolutely.
If there is an easier spot for them to pull into, they would probably use it.
Right. And you can see how the driveway here, it does not show its steepness in this photograph, but this is scored here from the undersides of vehicles. We will be improving that grade at that entry point to eliminate that from happening.
That driveway, is that on the east side or the west side?
That's west.
Okay.
This would be the new entry. This is the tree that we're talking about.
Mm-hmm.
That is...
Maple.
Okay.
You know, there's a number of comments about how you have to examine the sewer there, that the sewer is very old and in potentially decrepit condition. And if you're gonna be changing the grade, I saw the markings, the little green flags for the sewer in the front yard. That's right where you're gonna be cutting ground. I'm wondering if you're gonna have to redo the sewer at a lower level in some way, if it even can be done.
I don't know the answer. Patrick? Or Joe, I'm sorry. Yeah, Patrick, you don't know the answer.
I saw the comment from Ray Daly, and I really don't know exactly the condition of the pipe right now. It's something we're gonna have to investigate. I'm sure if we have to reline it or replace it, if that's the cause, we can do it. But I really can't answer it right now. I don't know inverts. I don't know anything about the pipe right now.
I was just wondering if you had a sense of how deep it is?
No, no, I don't know.
Okay.
Any other questions from the board? Have anybody? Comments? Done this end? No? Okay. Fred, did you have anything else?
I don't. We're happy to answer questions as they come up.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Let's open it to the public now. If you would like to come up, please, give us your name, your address, and your comments. Who would like to be first? And speak into the microphone, please.
Good evening. Good evening. I... My husband was chairman of the zoning board for 18 years, so I know what it's like when people come with files and all kinds of notes and things like that. But I'll try to make it as brief as I can. This whole thing started last December 19th. Pardon me?
Helen Gleason.
I'm sorry, Helen Gleason. I have it at 331 Ironworks Way. I had to stop and think of my address.
So you're in the apartment building?
I'm in the apartment building.
Or the condos behind?
That's correct.
Okay.
But this started the 19th of December, when my commissioner called me and asked me if I would come and say something to the board about the need for the sidewalk improvements, replacement, whatever. And it happens that December 19th was the same time that the commissioner signed the application for Mr. Emerson, and yet we were never told that. We stood there. We sat here for three hours waiting to talk, which I know is not unusual. But we sat there and waited and waited. but we sat there and waited and said our speech and everything else, never being told this was all being built in front of us. In fact, the first... The first application, I believe, was the previous April, if I'm not mistaken. So this has all gone on for 13, 14 months without neighbors, abutting neighbors, being told about this, which hasn't made us terribly happy, let me tell you that. That's putting it mildly. I also, when I heard about this last week, I... We also heard that night at the commissioner's meeting that Mr. Emerson was going to donate $180,000 for the sidewalk. And of course, the commissioners were saying, isn't it great? We need more people like Mr. Emerson to donate. Little did we know that he was going to do all this building in front of the property. I think it comes to 160-foot building, if I'm not mistaken. I could be wrong on that number. I think that's what it is, anyway. I got emails. I emailed our commissioner when I heard about 10 days ago that this was going on. No one ever told us. And he got back to me very quickly and started to explain the whole thing to me and talked about the $180,000. And it's a valuable project for the township because of that sum of money, and it's good for the sidewalk, blah, blah, blah. So at any rate, I got back with a little terse answer, I will say, and he got back to me saying, gee, Helen, I'm sorry you're upset. He didn't... He doesn't know what upset is, let me tell you. We didn't receive any notices. There was a notice on the pole outside that someone else will refer to shortly. And the $180,000 kept being mentioned again and again. And then there's, in a further email, the commissioner said, "The sidewalk project has been a pet of mine for many years. It's good for development. It's good for the township because I felt positive about this. I pushed for it. The developer, due to his willingness to contribute the money, is important." $180,000 being donated is wonderful, even though I think he had to do the sidewalk over anyway, so what's the difference whether it comes this way or that way? But when you think of it, in back in our particular community, there's about $700,000 worth of taxes that are paid each year. And that's a lot more than $180,000 that we're talking about. That just knocked my socks off when I heard that one. Anyway, to continue and make it brief, they were emails I got on the 16th of... I'll skip that. Notices were sent out for the zoning meeting that took place on February 6th of this year. They were sent out to everyone except for the 54 taxpayers and back. They were not sent out there. Now, some people have been a little sarcastic and said maybe it was done purposely. I would never think a thing like that. On the 17th and 18th, I visited the township building any number of times, got plans, talked to people, and everything else. On the 25th, we got the letter from Mr. Frommhold, talking about this meeting tonight, for which we are grateful to get written notice. There are just too many things that have really bothered us this whole time, and I think you could say legitimately, not to be notified, of what's going on in our own backyard, literally in our own front yard. There are some things that I think the impact of that building, of something that wide, 160-foot building, is pretty tough. It's... Well, it's tough on us, but that's... I can't put that into the criteria, I know. It's tough going down the street. It's a huge thing that you're going to be looking at. Looks like a dormitory or something like that. That's a lot of sticks and stones up there, I think. And from where we're sitting, we look out, and now, of course, all the trees are in bloom and everything else, and it doesn't look like it's that awful, except for the impact of the side yard setbacks that we're going to be missing, which I think, or if I'm not mistaken, is it 20 feet per building? I'm sorry.
15.
15. Okay. So there's 30 feet of open space that we had out to the pike, of light and air and...
They're not conforming. There's not 30 feet.
There's not there?
No.
That I did not know. I'm just going by the zoning code.
The properties were built before the zoning code.
I'm sure of that.
Probably.
I'm sure of that. But how wide are those setbacks, do you know?
I'd have to measure it, but... And we could... I'm sure one of the drawings has a scale, but I don't think the gap between any building is 30 feet.
Okay.
Between any two.
Okay. 15? Okay, so that's 30 feet? No, it's 15 feet per side.
Right, except that the buildings don't... If you... If they don't build anything and they leave the buildings the way they are, the gaps right now between the buildings, except in one instance, are not 30 feet. They're all less than that. What you look at every day right now is less than 30 feet, except in one of the pairing of driveway.
You're saying 30 feet per building? Or I'm saying 15?
15 feet per building, but it doesn't exist. In other words, what you look at now is not 30 feet. It's less than 30 feet.
And you're talking cumulative?
No, I'm talking between each building. Building to building.
It doesn't really...
It doesn't matter.
Allergies are killing me here. It doesn't matter what it is, it's changing.
And I accept change.
Okay.
I'm old enough to realize that that's going to be part of life, let's face it.
Hey, I think the important thing is, is there's gap between the buildings, whether it's 15, 30, whatever.
And that's what I'm... That's what we're going to miss.
That's really what you're trying to say.
Exactly right. Thank you. That's right. Exactly. That, to me, is a huge problem, if you ask me. But... And also, I was thinking, going down that driveway, and I go in and out of there a lot, we've got the Land Rover dealership on the one side, and they're good neighbors, but we've got car carriers there. We get down to the bottom, we go and look, and at 5:00, we look down, I do, anyway, look down towards Shimonie Road, so that I'll know when the light changes, I'll be able to get out of there after that traffic that's going there passes now. So, all right, at this point, or at this, when this is a fait accompli, if it is, it's... That light is going to be... It doesn't make any difference, because we're going to have all these cars coming out of this place at 5:00. So how do we get out of there? It's terrible. We went for a... Tried to get a traffic light there, because it's really bad. There's going to be an accident. We were told, I think, that there had to be a fatality before they could put the light up. And that was really encouraging. Anyway, but that's another part. But I saw a strange thing today. There was a Land Rover that went down in front of me on the driveway this morning and wanted to turn right. They couldn't get out, so they turned, they wanted to go left. So they went right, cut through Bryn Mawr Trust driveway, and cut around there, and then cut down through the neighborhood, down at Pembroke and Midland and all that. I mean, I go through the parking lot for the stores there, and that's commercial. But I mean, when people start going down through a neighborhood to be able to avoid this traffic that's going to be generated even more than it is now, that's pretty bad. So anyway, other people have other things to say, and thank you for listening to me.
I have a question for the applicant. Do you know where... I think you folks send out the notices, don't you, for zoning? You get a list from the township?
Kathy, I have an answer for that.
Okay. Yes?
It's my understanding that the way that those parcels are coded into the township's GIS system, they didn't come out... They didn't come up when they... When the office did this data search to see all of the surrounding properties. It was brought to our attention two weeks ago that someone didn't receive a notice. We looked at it, and Fred's office had done a search at the county level and pulled these addresses up. They came at the county level, not at the township level, and that's when the notices were sent out.
Do... I'm just curious for future reference, not specifically this, but do you work from property tax records for the addresses?
From, yes, from the township's property tax records, yeah. And I don't have the answer why these didn't come up. I'm not... I'm not familiar with how that system works. The girls in the office handle that. But there was something where the addresses of the parcels were, again, were not correct or something in the system.
Maybe in the future, in addition to that, somebody should actually look at a map. And, you know, because it's obvious there are residences back there.
Other than the notices that were mailed out, everything was posted in according to the ordinances, so...
Okay. Thank you.
Other than that, that's a big that, though. What they did was they sent them to the developer, to the Lenfest or Lenwayne Properties, instead of sending them to the homeowners who pay the taxes. But that's how it went out, that way. They've been out of here for six or eight years, and that's who it went to.
All right. Thank you.
That's how that was done.
Okay. Who's next in the audience there?
My name is Paul Atkins.
Wait till we get up to the mic here, okay?
My name is Paul Atkins. I'm also at Pembroke North 233. I think most of the discussion has been about the impact of this development on Lancaster Avenue, but it's just as important about the impact of this development to the Pembroke North properties. As Helen mentioned, it's a lot of tax money that's been generated, new tax money that's been generated from that property. So the couple of things that I think have to be addressed is, one, I wasn't clear on the... What's going to happen to the height of this building? Is this building going to be three stories up, or is it going to remain the same height that it is now? Same height that it is now?
Why don't you give us all your questions, then we can have the applicant come up and answer those questions, okay?
Well, it was just answered.
That's number one.
It was just answered. That's number one. Number two, it was mentioned about a light. I'm going to make a statement at this meeting that I'm going to hold the township responsible if they do not put a traffic light at the exit of Pembroke North. That's an extremely dangerous intersection on Lancaster Avenue. Turning left is extremely dangerous. You'd say, well, why don't you turn right and then turn left? You'd have to go all the way down to the end to the next traffic light, and if you're going to add more traffic from this new development, cars coming out, even if it's 30 cars, even if it's 14 cars, as Helen was saying, is going to make it much more difficult. So I think an absolute requirement for any... First, it should be a requirement now. They should have done that when they put 54 apartments up there, 54 condos. But an absolute requirement is to put a light in.
Have you tried working with your commissioner and going to traffic review?
Yes, we have, and he's presented it, and as Helen told you, there was some sort of offhand answer that they're waiting for a fatality.
Would it be PennDOT, Kathy? Isn't 30 a highway?
Well, I think it first goes to Traffic Review Committee of Township, and then they take it from there if they feel it's needed. Is that correct, Roger?
Yeah, but PennDOT has jurisdiction over that. That's not something we can just do. PennDOT has jurisdiction.
It's something you could encourage if the township thought it was needed.
I have not been directed to do a traffic study to determine whether or not it meets the warrants.
Okay.
I know that this topic has come up, and there's been residents that have visited staff traffic, and I would just... If you're very concerned, then it's something you might want to continue to visit staff traffic and let them know. They'll be meeting, I think, in two Wednesdays from this Wednesday.
Yeah, I think that's maybe the approach you want to take. I don't know that this developer really has any control over that.
No, but the township.
Okay. Okay, who's next? Come on up. Come on down.
My name is Elaine Atkins, and I also live in Pembroke North. My concern is that it's very crowded now. I'm very concerned about the nature of a commercial building in what I thought was a mixed-use area. The condominiums are just going to fade into, like, the background. I'm worried about the dump trucks that are coming in. I'm worried about increasing traffic. It seems like an odd combination now. It was okay when you had five private homes that were being used as commercial properties, but to have an ostensibly commercial building certainly changes the nature of our neighborhood, and I am voicing concern about that.
All right. Thank you. Anybody else in the audience? Yes, please.
Cynthia Roberts at 321 Ironworks. Traffic study, absolutely. If one can be done, starting in September, not in August. The power grid in Wayne, it's notoriously failed over and over and over again. What will the complication of yet another major office complex do to the power grid there? We lose our power constantly. What about light intrusion from this heavy-duty parking lot behind us? As it is, I really wish that we had evergreens, not deciduous trees to separate us. They say that there is no intrusion by looking at these buildings. We look right down on the parking lots of all those cars that are there now. To double those cars, we need super-tall evergreens to hide that.
Next person, please.
My name is Bob Stevens. I, too, live in Pembroke North. It's sort of echoing much of the same concerns you've heard. I think that... I understand that there's a requirement to display the lighting that's necessary for the parking lot, and I sure hope there's some consideration given to those of us in what they call the front of the parking lot, the building side, for what that's going to do to us at night. As we sit and look out all that window, that's what you see at night. So those lights, if they're coming back at us, are going to be a real nuisance. If they're directed down, then that's what they should be done, I think. I would echo the power problem. As a matter of fact, I think if you're expanding your operation, you, too, will experience, so we may be allies in that. But the power goes off a lot, and all of this... I don't know what, if anything, you folks can do about that, but that is a problem for us up there with PICO. I'm a little surprised about the parking. There's about 50 spaces there right now for the three houses that are being talked about. You're adding about 15% more space and no real addition to the parking, and that seems funny. And along with that, the idea of it's skirting, I'll use that word, edging about the loading requirement, to me, seems very difficult. I think you're asking for a problem to happen. Cars go by on Lancaster Avenue at 50 miles an hour regularly. I walk my dog across in the park, and I, too, have a great challenge getting across that pike, because it's so darn busy. But I think if you're going to... If you're not going to have space for a truck or a UPS guy to get in there and turn around, you're asking for a problem that might come back and hurt somebody. I think that's a very dangerous thing. I also would comment that when the park was done, the walkway was moved back off the pike, and it really... It really is a joy to walk over there. The existing sidewalk on the pike is, to me, just a terrible danger. Anybody riding a bike, anybody walking is... We all avoid it, I think, if we can, and not to do something about that with a major development, I think, is a terrible error. I don't know if you have any power to do anything about that.
I think I recall they were moving it back a bit from the curb.
That's the $180,000 thing we would keep hearing about.
How far back from the curb is it coming? Yeah.
Look in the applicants here, they could tell us.
We could answer that afterwards. Why don't you give us all your questions?
Okay. That's it.
Okay.
Oh, just the final comment is, I think it's interesting that the applicant stresses that they're people from here, they live here, they're establishing their headquarters there. I think that's a wonderful thing. I'm just absolutely stunned that there's been no interface with the people who represent us at the apartments. I think that's a... I think that's a, it's a terrible mistake to have undertaken such a great thing without any, any reach out to the, to us in the apartment.
All right, thank you. Actually, I would encourage the property owner to do that, to try to work with them. And just out of curiosity, what is, what is the 180 that they're talking about?
So when we brought this up, Commissioner Higgins met with us and said what was important to him, and we said, well, as we redevelop this area, we're happy to, when we have our contractors here, to fund that.
And now, are you referring to the sidewalk? That's something we would have to do anyway.
Correct, that we would have to do.
So it's nothing additional you're doing. You were doing it, you're moving it back. Now, there is a, weren't you going to have some sort of strip separating the sidewalk from the street, as I recall?
Yeah, so there's going to be a grass kind of berm in between the sidewalk. But I don't know that we had to do anything to touch the sidewalk. So for us, we were going to leave the sidewalk as is, and he said it was important to him, and we said, okay, we'll put it into the scope of our project. If that was something that we would have had to do anyway, this is the first I'm hearing that.
Yes, it would have been something that you would have been doing anyway. And just to let you know, Radnor Township was not successful in getting that grant. However, when this development moves through, they would be making these improvements anyway, and we're hoping that we can eventually apply for those grants.
What grant is that, Amy?
We were trying to do some sidewalk improvements all along this frontage from Iron Works Way and heading towards the east. And I believe, oh, I can't remember where it ends, at 427, I think that they have the sidewalk that has the grass verge, and basically trying to get the sidewalks away from the curb line, and then having improvements to the curb line. So you would have been required by PennDOT to modify the curbing along that frontage anyway, and we had requested that the sidewalk be put in, in that manner.
Well, at least you know our intentions were noble.
Okay, thank you.
The point of fact, though, how many feet?
The verge is two feet.
Two feet, okay.
I'm not aware that they're, pardon me? Well, I, I think the requirement, the design requirement for this sidewalk, which incidentally continues beyond our property, is two feet. We're happy to meet whatever the design requirement is, and I think it's two feet, so that's what our plan proposes.
Now, you say two feet, that's the setback from the curb, correct?
That's the two-foot grass verge between the curb and the sidewalk.
Correct, okay, and then your sidewalk is four feet wide?
Correct.
All right.
Correct, yeah. I'm not aware, I'm not aware that there is a verge requirement in the code now?
There's not, but the sidewalk, what we required you to do was move the wall back because, isn't there a slight wall somewhere along that? And that was located right within the right-of-way. So we had required you to move that wall back outside the right-of-way, and while you're doing that, move the sidewalk with the two-foot verge. And that's how it came to be.
And I think, and I'm not sure how this would all come out if it were redesigned, but our thought was that going in, we could leave the sidewalk where it is under the code, or we could accommodate the two-foot verge and the new planned design requirements for the sidewalk, to the extent that they're requirements. But on a voluntary basis, we were happy to do that. And I believe that our grading plan now will, as I had mentioned a while ago, eliminate the wall so that we can grade up instead of having that wall right adjacent to the sidewalk. I think it makes a more comfortable pedestrian experience. So I'm not sure what credit we get dollar-wise for this, but that's our plan.
Let you try to work with the neighbors and maybe you can keep that in mind.
And let me say this. We regret that there was not the notice to our neighbors. There are neighbors to the rear. We frankly think that we are beautifying this property, which will benefit our client, obviously, but we think it's a plus for the community and for our residential neighbors to the rear. You can see the three buildings that are there. Our building will be a little shorter than, than those buildings, but a longer building, as they are longer buildings behind us. And hopefully, this green area that you see on the plan, that is partly on our property, partly on their property, will be a nice vegetative screen between the two. But we're very happy to meet with our neighbors between now and whatever the next meeting is here at the township, and answer questions they have, and if there are things that we can do, we're happy to discuss that.
Wonderful, thank you.
Thank you.
A question of lighting was brought up. Normally, that is downlighting. You're going to comply with the dark-skY requirements?
Absolutely, and that's important, and we recognize that.
And the normal work hours of your business, is that evening hours or primarily day hours?
So we stagger it a little. So we have some folks that start at seven, some folks that start at eight, and some start at 8:30, and all those are eight-and-a-half-hour workdays. And practically no hours on the weekends or evenings, which I really think that township would, would like that, because Friday night till Monday morning, it's all yours. There's nobody going in and out of there. Evening, there's no one going in and out of there. And what we've done, if you, if you come to our property, and I encourage, I don't know if all of you have seen it, but what we do to our properties, I'll put them up against any property within five square miles, just beautifying the property. So we, we really believe that we're an asset to the community, and we're really very, very, very good neighbors.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Kathy, I have one quick comment about the buffering and shading, just to keep in mind. That's your south-facing view, right? And I know that you're concerned. Just remember about light coming back and forth, too. Like, the more evergreen screening you put up, the less light you'll get back there. So just keep that into mind as you work through that, so there's no surprises.
Kathy, if I can follow up with your lighting question? There was a lighting plan in front of you tonight that was submitted, again, by the applicant at the end of last week. We haven't completely gone through with the review yet, but that will meet. They provided us what's required. We're in the process of reviewing that now. And I'll be sure to go through that and look at the map and make sure that everything is okay with the light bleeding off of the site and everything.
Okay, especially to the back area there. And we have, excuse me, we have the dark-sky requirements in there?
No, that's not part of this, part of the code. That was the, you're thinking of the CICD thing.
Yeah, I know, but we haven't put that in anywhere else?
No.
Okay.
There are requirements, I mean, you can't have a whole lot of light bleed off of the site. So I mean, it's, you know, there are still adequate requirements in the code to keep that from happening.
Yes, sir.
Good evening. My name is Bill McCullen, and I too live in Pembroke North. Two, two basic comments. One, this is a very, a very good photo here. No one can say that these three buildings right now look, look like anything other than old stately homes. And this building that we saw over here does not look anything like a stately home. That changes the character of this neighborhood significantly. And whether it's 15 feet, 10 feet, or 30 feet, these two gaps right here are going to be missing, in addition to the appearance of stately homes. That's a big change. We didn't know about it. That's my personal comment. Now, if I may, I'd like to speak on behalf of a person who left a letter, which I'd like to read, who also lives in the building, and the reason he cannot be here is included in the letter. So if I may read this letter. So this is addressed to Radnor Township Planning Commission, June 5th. Dear members of the Township Planning Commission, my name is Kevin Anbary, and I have resided in Radnor Township at my current address on Iron Works Way for close to five years. I wish I could be physically present this evening, but since I worked late days as a physician in Allentown, I was unable to attend this important meeting. I currently reside on Iron Works Way with my fiancee, Jill Marinus. We've been made aware of the plans to build a building directly in front of Pembroke North Condominium Community. Jill and I, like every neighbor with whom I have discussed this, feel very strongly that this project should not be approved. The proposed building is very large and would markedly hurt the appearance of our community. It would not fit with the surrounding buildings. It would block us in and completely change the feel of our homes. We live on the first floor of our building, and as such, the proposed building would block our view and give our place a fenced-in feeling. This project would detract from our enjoyment of our home and community. Furthermore, I'm very concerned about the effect this project would have on the traffic in our neighborhood. Lancaster Avenue is our only way to get onto the road. Currently, we already face difficulties because of the busy traffic and the lack of a light at our intersection. Adding the proposed project would complicate things even further and make entering and exiting our community more arduous and difficult, and potentially more unsafe. Such a project would negatively impact our community financially, as well as have a negative impact on the value of our homes. I can personally say that I enjoy living in our community very much, and I'm very happy to be a resident of Radnor Township. I chose to live here even though my workplace is in Allentown. I would not want the community I chose to be negatively affected by this proposed project. I am a loyal taxpaying citizen in this township and wish to remain here as long as possible. I truly feel that this project is not in the best interest of our community and township. Therefore, I would like to respectfully ask you not to approve the building of this proposed project on 409 through 413 East Lancaster Avenue. Thank you very much. Sincerely, Kevin K. Anbary, M.D.
Thank you. Why don't you turn a copy of that letter over to the township officials over there? Anybody else in the audience? Okay, Helen? Okay.
I put in my notes that there could be 40% more employees. Was I right on that?
Yeah, 2% more employees.
So, you know, I go the other way. But how many are there now, then?
So it's about an average of...
Would you mind coming up to the mic, please? Or using the handheld?
It's about 15 per building. And we're not at full capacity right now. That's capacity.
So you're saying 75 employees?
Right now, it's a capacity for 45 in the three buildings.
Okay, but you say that there are 40, 75 employees that you have there? Or did I miss, I missed that?
No, it's about 15 per building, and there's...
But there are five buildings.
So there's two buildings that aren't in use right now.
Okay, okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
That helps. And also, I wanted to ask about trees. There's a pine tree in the back that's the tallest tree on the properties. It's about 50 feet high. Is that a definite that that's staying?
It's along the edge of the back.
Yes, it is, okay. Thank you very much.
Is there somebody from the Pembroke group that is like the homeowners association president? Okay. Why don't you give your name and phone number to the developers and then get in touch with you, set up a meeting? Is that agreeable? Okay. Okay, board. Any questions, comments, thoughts?
I would be interested to know if the community as a whole feels that if the developer were to work with them closely on some of the particulars that they've brought up tonight from light and just screening, if that would satisfy most of it? Because it seems like only the last letter really objected so much to it. Most people seem to have concerns with what they were seeing or weren't seeing. So I would, it's hard for me to make a decision on how to move forward if I don't see what the consensus is necessarily here. I know that's something they're probably working on. Is there anybody that can comment to that?
Good evening. My name is Philip Demming. I'm on 332 Iron Works Way. Since this, we were just learned of this meeting only on the 25th of May, I think it would be premature for us to come up with some consensus. We would be willing to listen to what's said, but there's still many open issues, particularly with the power, which was identified. I know that's not your jurisdiction, but certainly council here should be well acquainted with that, since he is also affected by that with his office building. So I think that's one of the major concerns here, because we've lost power since the beginning of this year eight times.
Wow.
That's a lot for this community. It has been a chronic problem since I've been here for only 35 years, and it has been a major problem. So we want to make sure that we get some answers on that, because then we would be able to give you a more full answer in terms of how we feel on this.
For some crazy reason, the power, I think the power has been that way pretty much across the whole township. This year, we've lost it more, at least eight or nine times as well, and I'm nowhere near where you are.
Yeah, if you, if you recall, the grid there that covers Lancaster Avenue, basically Ward 1. And that, that particular, that sub-grid area is the problem. And talking to PICO, where the unit just blew up two weeks ago on Chimoni, that, that's a problem, and that's affecting all...
I'm far from you. I'm all the way by Marple. I'm like the third, the last house.
I assume you're still in Radnor Township.
I'm in Radnor Township, yeah. But I'm, I'm like the fifth last house in Radnor Township, all the way in Marple.
Right.
Okay, so we've had a lot of downs this year, more so than we've had over the past couple of years. But like I'm saying, I think that's been a PICO problem across the whole township. And maybe the whole county, I'm not really sure.
Well, the township's aware of it, and, and we've been hearing about that, but I think it needs something to, we're, we're also a commercial zone here. And it is affecting other businesses when this goes down. So that was one of the, to answer your question, I think it would be premature to give you an answer this evening, but certainly we would be willing to work with council through their, their owner and see what happens there, and then respond back to you on a full answer.
Great, thank you.
Actually, the power's issue's been a problem for a while, and we were actually concerned, and we supported your condos coming in, but we were concerned when you guys came in, that it would exacerbate it when the, when the condos were built, that that would stress the power grid. Yeah, thank God we didn't vote you guys down, you're in.
What, what other properties do you have in this? Are there Jason properties that you have?
When you're looking at the building, Paul's going to point them out.
Do you have a master plan for this area, that you're incorporating those into some future project?
Patrick, I, I think this is our master plan. The one building being demolished, the connector building, and then the two buildings that are at 405 and 407 would continue to be standalone buildings. There is no, there is no plan for further development at 405 or 407.
All right, thank you. I have a question on the elevation, this tower-type thing here. What is that?
That part of the building is where the stairs will be located, and in part, it's there to help break up the lengthy facade of this building and give it a small-scale, relatable element there, so.
It, to me, it doesn't fit in with the rest of the building. It looks like a fortress or something. Is there anything you can do to break up that wall? I know that's not things we cover, but in looking at the elevation, that sort of smacked me right between the eyes.
Yeah, I think this particular view, you're right, that's a broad expanse there. I spoke to one of the other neighbors earlier today, and we talked about a tall evergreen there to just kind of soften that.
Or windows.
That's a possibility. Again, that's our stair tower, so we would need to...
Are you allowed by code to put windows in a stair tower?
It depends, I have to check.
Okay. I really would like to see something to break that up. Yes, you can? Okay. I didn't know.
I have a couple of comments. I've been to the site visit several times. I, I honestly believe the developer, when they say that they're going to make the back of the, where their, their front of the development look good, really good, beautify it, you can tell by other parcels that they have that they've done that. That's, that's my positive comment. My, my, one thing I had, that I can't sort of get past is the helter-skelter nature of the traffic around this project, and the tight feel that you have when you try to get into the site. I think it's going, when I was there today, we, I saw several people not knowing where they were going, basically in the back part of the property, and they were, the way they were navigating around, I can only imagine that's going to get worse when there are more cars. To Mr. Rice's comment about defining the Dennis driveway in a way that people aren't using that driveway, or coming to some kind of agreement about how that can work better is vital to this thing working. So I, I think, you know, saying a solution to the delivery is having deliveries made from Lancaster Avenue is a, is a mistake. It's, that's not a solution to me. It's, that doesn't work. So I feel like there are best, there are good intentions here and a decent plan, but there are some things that are, to me, that are holding it back from, you know, being as good a plan as possible for the location where, where it sits, so. It just concerns me very much that, you know, people say, well, delivery trucks are going to park on Lancaster Avenue because that's what they do.
Yeah, and that's my failure to explain, I think. If there's any thought that delivery trucks would park on Lancaster Avenue, that's not what our intention is. Our intention is that deliveries would be taken at the rear, and that's where the UPS truck would come, the FedEx truck would come. I was showing those pictures to demonstrate what happens now and a condition that would be eliminated by this. What we don't have is a, a large oversized space in which a FedEx truck could park or a UPS could park. We, we don't have that. And, but most offices, even if they had that, that's not the reality. The UPS people pull up close to the front door, they'd like to be pulling into the handicap spaces if they could, but they don't do that. The, the one thing I did want to mention is the, the existing condition, I think you all know, is, is not good. You've got multiple driveways, we're eliminating that. And I, and I don't want to say this is good because we're eliminating... And I don't want to say this is good because we're eliminating something that is far worse, namely the existing condition with the driveway. But we do think that this is very orderly. It's, as Frank said, all right turn, in and out, and most people will be coming in the back, coming out the other side of the building, on the east side of the building. Those employees who are parking in the front between the building and Lancaster Avenue, they'll just go around the building and park in the front. And at the end of the day, or if they happen to leave at some point during the middle of the day, but more likely than not, at the end of the day, when they leave, they'll circulate around the building. We did add, because it was a comment and a concern, and I did not point this out, we did add this extension in this area to force cars, if you will, a physical condition on the site that would channel the cars in that one-way direction. We're happy to optimize that if there are any further comments as to how that can be optimized, but we want to optimize our signage, our directional arrows, and all of that so that everything is working to keep that continuous flow in a clockwise direction around the building. We think it's, we think it works well, works well for this office building, but we're happy to take whatever additional looks we can to fine-tune it and make it work as best as it can.
Can I make a comment here? This plan works because they got a variance from the very things that are supposed to safeguard us from this plan. And from the, the neighbors have very, very good points about the scale of the architecture, about the length of the building. I mean, those things can only exist because of the variance that were granted. So it's a bit disturbing to be kind of undermined by the zoning board. I'm just very, very bothered by it because I, and also, we saw this plan a few months ago. We didn't like it then. We made a number of comments at that time, and it came back, the same plan. I don't find that very respectful of the very comments that we had to say. And we brought up these issues of scale and the density of the neighborhood. It's clear that you're putting more office space on there than it can handle. We didn't like the parking in the front. We didn't like what it was doing to Lancaster Avenue, which we now realize is the back of your building. And so these are very bothersome things, and as a planning group and a commission, they've got us talking about very small things when we should be looking at a little bigger picture of what's going on. I just, I mean, I'm completely opposed to this thing.
If I could address, they're important comments, and I'd like to address them if I can. If you look at this building, this is a very well-articulated addition. Articulated well in the rear, articulated well on Lancaster Avenue. If you compare it to the three buildings that are very lovely residential buildings behind us that aren't articulated anywhere near this, that don't have, and they're fine, they're nicely landscaped, but very narrow landscaping between those buildings and our property line. We have lovely front lawn areas with landscaping in front of our building to soften that view of our building. We have the landscaping along the perimeter. The lighting will be appropriate. Respectfully, we think it is good. It is a well-done addition. We didn't just draw a straight-line back wall along the rear of the building or a straight-line front wall along Lancaster Avenue, so while...
Not to interrupt you, I don't think anybody's questioning the attractiveness of the building and the work and the landscaping that you did. I think our problem, at least my problem is like his, it's too much building. Too much of a nice thing's not necessarily makes it a good thing. I mean, it's a beautiful building, it's just, and we said this two months ago, or two and a half months, three months ago when you were here before, there's just too much building for this site. Unfortunately, I'm not sure we can do too much about it now.
And I appreciate that comment. We haven't added all that much floor area. What we've done is we've made this work as a single building that works for an office with the peppering of buildings that are used for office purposes or other purposes along Lancaster Avenue. It doesn't really allow for what is happening here. We had a hair salon, we had a spa, we had these other uses. This allows for an integrated office use for a building that will endure with the preservation of the wing buildings. While it may not be perfect if you were planning this area from scratch, we think it is a good response to the existing condition and approving the existing condition.
Can I just add to that real quick? The one thing that this plan fails to really emphasize, it looks like this is all proposed building in the center. You know that there's an existing building in the middle. The net increase is 2,677 feet. It's 2,700 square feet of added actual space that could be occupied by people. The amount of traffic that you could generate for an office use in an additional 2,700 square feet is not meaningful. In fact, the condo units that we're hearing from, the Pembroke North, they're typically on the order of 1,850, 1,900 square feet. There's 50 of them. It's 100,000 square feet. So we're talking about a net increase that's less than two of those units.
Two bad things don't make a good thing. You know, it doesn't, it's still, it's still too big for the land that you have.
It's a small amount.
In my humble opinion, I think it's a great idea. I think it's a beautiful building. It's just too much of a good thing isn't necessarily good.
I beg to disagree. I don't think it's a beautiful building. It's overly articulated. It looks a bit, almost overly articulated to the point where it's almost silly. And with an attempt to kind of blur the lines that it's a really big building like this. I mean, I can, I can show you beautiful estates that are big buildings that are much simpler than this and far more elegant, and we, perhaps that could have been entertained, but it wasn't. And that's the other thing about this. This looked like this the last time they came in. There's no change to this plan.
May I, my turn?
Yes, please.
Elaine Atkins again. Looking at the diagram, it looks massive in the sense of not so much square feet, but it gives you a totally different commercial feeling that's very much changing our neighborhood. I think the letter from the physician that was read before mentioned something about stately private homes. We bought our condos behind stately private homes, not behind large contiguous 5,000 or more square-foot office building. That's added to the idea that traffic is really bad as it is. That, plus, we don't know, and somebody just mentioned before that you didn't hear much criticism from the neighborhoods, neighbors. Most of us have never even heard about this. My husband and I just found out about this two days ago. We made sure that we would be here tonight. I think that when people are going to see that an office building is fronting their property instead of the trees and the open spaces, they're going to be pretty upset. But of course, we'd have to see. So I, what I'm asking for is more time for our neighbors to become familiar with what is intended and deal with that in a more, you know, time.
I think it'd give more time for the architects and their team to put a little more imagination to the plan as well, instead of just stretching between these two old houses that happen to be sitting there.
The thing is, it is Lancaster Avenue, and Lancaster Avenue is a commercial strip. It's a major commercial strip running through our township and the county. To expect normal stately homes to be on there is a little bit stretched. You have to really believe in your heart, when you moved in there, that someday there was going to be something down there that wasn't necessarily going to be those three houses. So what you really should be kind of putting all your efforts towards is, not that they're changing it, but getting the change to kind of fit more into what you feel is acceptable. But it's going to be, you know, what they're, what they're proposing down there, okay, might be better than a strip center that may potentially be down there. So you gotta kind of, you gotta kind of come to the realization that you live on Lancaster Avenue, and Lancaster Avenue is a commercial artery. It's, that's what it is. It's just, I just think it's just too much for that specific land.
Just one comment, and there are different ways to look at what is too much, and different people may have different views. From purely a building coverage point of view, we are at the proposed 15.5%. The code would permit us to go up to 35%, well more than double what we're proposing. So that's one way to look at it.
However, you would have to have parking to go with it. But anyway...
Understood.
I have a question, unfortunately for Amy, but maybe Mr. Taffiani could answer this. One way it seems that you might be able to address the traffic problem is to turn that Chamonix and Lancaster light into a four-way all-stop. Even though there's not a lot of pedestrians crossing, if that was a four-way all-stop like the light in front of Margaret Quo and the light on West Wayne and Conestoga, a four-way stop would give you some relief in making turns out of your driveway for the Pembroke folks and for the users of the space.
So like a pit scramble phase where all the traffic...
Yes. Yes. Well, I'm asking the question when she gets back. Somebody will repeat it to her. I do want to make one general comment. I want to, my personal feeling at this point in the meeting, oh, here comes Amy too, is that we should consider tabling this because you haven't had the meeting with the neighbors. There's five things that staff hasn't reviewed yet, and I would recommend that when we, if we get to that point relatively soon. But now I can repeat my question for Amy. Amy?
Sorry, what?
I wanted to repeat my question for you. A lot of concern has been voiced about traffic and inabilities to enter into Lancaster at, you know, because no matter what, people either coming from Chamonix or they're coming down Lancaster. If we did a scramble or all-four stop at the Chamonix and Lancaster intersection, so that there was red lights in all directions briefly, there's one right now, Margaret Quo. Right, and Margaret Quo, that's a four-way stop. You know, everybody can walk. And then, of course, you know, North Wayne and Lancaster too. Well, it's cheaper than a light, it might be easier.
It would depend on what your volumes are. I would hesitate to put an all scramble in that type of situation, depending, you know, I know that we have them down at the university because there's such a high pedestrian there, and that's a good way to take care of that. And we also have it, I think, at Luella. I believe that has a scramble also.
Yeah, but at West Wayne and Conestoga.
Okay. That's certainly something that could be brought up, but I don't think that it's something that needs to be brought up as part of this project. The increase in their traffic, based on the increase in square footage, is very low and introduces a very low number of volumes, so even a traffic signal at that intersection, I think it's at Iron Works Way, it would have to be under the warranting conditions today, not necessarily because of this development coming in.
Cheryl, you wanted to mention something, come up, please. Microphone.
I'm sorry, Cheryl Tamola. I just think that Amy seemed to think that we were talking about at Iron Works Way. We're talking about Chamonix and...
I knew it, yeah.
And I think that that would be seen with more favor because the train station is there, and that's all part of a larger vote that Pembroke has facilitating getting to train stations and alleviating...
I just think that that's a separate issue from this land development project, so, yes.
Oh, I understand that, but I'm just saying for further notice, I'd like to be able to tell you in public that I think this would be a good thing to pursue.
Then somebody should probably contact the police department and ask, have it put on the agenda and brought to staff traffic.
Okay, that's a method, boy. Okay. And I did want to make a comment about the, this being a commercial area. This block is not.
Yet.
Yet. And the idea has been for every land use plan all along, as Kathy well knows, is to not have it be a commercial area. The idea is to introduce to people who are now hurdling off the Blue Route to, you're coming into a town, so you have this smaller scale and non-commercial-looking buildings. So that's why we've, all this time, we've kept it zoned, unless something's changed at R5.
Mm-mm. No. It's residential zoned.
Yeah, it's still R5.
But most of the usage is commercial.
Right, exactly. And we've always known that. But I think that the idea of saying that all Lancaster Avenue is a commercial zone, all the apartment buildings there, including the nice condominiums, are part of a residential zone thing so that that scale is kept.
What's your thoughts on this project?
Well, I'm really happy that they kept the two buildings on either end. You know, as someone who's interested in historic preservation and that kind of thing, that's very important to me. I've spoken to them, I've spoken that I didn't like the tower either, and I don't like the glass window, and I think that it, I am concerned in a long-range view with, if they own all these properties, you know, back when we were doing the con-plan, we were always worried about somebody accumulates enough properties and they can build a mondo thing there. And we're not mondo yet with this, but there could be. You know, they could continue adding two more things on the other side and make just this huge apart, office building. So I am concerned about that. And I want it to work because, because they have these two nice buildings and they're keeping them, and they're doing a good job, but I think it just needs, it needs...
A little scale down?
A little scale down, like, yeah. I mean, I don't, I'm not an architect, I don't know, but it just seems like it needs maybe the area between them to be differently configured. And I've spoken to the architect about it, and I spoke at the zoning hearing board too, so.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, Roberta Winters. I live in Williams Road in Rosemont, and I just have a question about process. I think it's regrettable that, you know, they weren't notified for zoning. I think all these variances are problematic because I think they do sort of erode the nature of our comprehensive land use plan, and I was wondering if there's any way in which this could be recommended to go back to zoning so that these people could have a voice and that their opinions might be part of the decision-making process. Thank you.
I would doubt at this point, okay, that's what I thought. The answer for going back to zoning is no. You missed that window, obviously, because you didn't know about it. I agree, I hear you there.
If we find out it was intention?
No, I don't think it was. I think... I can't answer that.
Let us, let us know. Let us know. If you have proof of that, bring it up, okay? After tonight.
All right.
I still think we should table it tonight.
Okay.
Because there's too many loose ends that township staff hasn't even seen yet.
And also, this hasn't gone before Shade Tree. It was supposed to at the last meeting, but it did not happen, so Shade Tree will hear about, hear from you guys in June.
All right. Is there a motion to table?
So moved.
Yes.
Second? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Before we end this, however, I would like for the board to give you some of our thoughts. I want you to meet with the neighbors and...
We will do that.
Okay. My thinking, and this is my thinking, and not necessarily board's, I agree with Cheryl that the triangular window in the middle of this is a modern touch that doesn't really seem to work with the rest of it, and the tower really bothers me. I would like to see the scale in the middle drop down so that visually you wouldn't have an impact straight across at the same height, and I think it would give some relief to the neighbors in the back also. I don't like the direction or the traffic flow that much, but I understand, I agree with you when you explained yourself, yes, on that. But I would like the 405 property, if I have the address right, to work with that and somehow get a better driveway through there. Or 415, is it? Okay.
All right.
Whatever the one is to the west of it.
407.
Okay, 407. Since you own... Since you own it, I would like to see a better road there, and I think the cross-easement with the dentist's office is really important too, because you don't know that the dentist is going to be there forever. And if you can somehow work with him to get that, I think it would be positive. And right now, you have a negotiating chip in that he's using your property to exit. So, I think that's important to do for future, maybe not now, but for future in there. Any comments from down here?
I would just like to see the, the traffic, the driveways, the traffic better defined, see what the signage is going to look like. I want, I would want to feel, feel the user experience. You're coming off Lancaster Avenue going 40 miles an hour, you're looking to turn in this property, it's tight as heck. You know, we were, Skip and I were there today with you, and that driveway on, that we were measuring with a tape measure, if you could show us how you could make that bigger, you know, more accessible to truck, I think what we're saying is like, there's some, some details here about trash pickup and deliveries and ingress and egress that you could probably finesse.
And you need to address the trash pickup better, and have an area, show an area on the plan for a trash receptacle, because I think with a building this size, you're going to need a dumpster and put it somewhere. And it'll also make your trash pickup more efficient.
I had one stray thought on the facade facing Lancaster. Would it be possible to do some sort of a one-story open-air pass-through where you were aiming that path? And that would sort of break up the massiveness a little bit. Maybe something like, you know, 15 or 20 or 12 feet wide at least, sort of, you'd have a bridge over to the other side, but it would be open at ground level.
Can I, can I make a comment? Just to be clear, I'm not opposed to development on this site. What I'm, what I'm kind of bothered by is using the code, either using the code and/or a reaction to the code by variance as a design tool isn't a great way to design. If, if I had all these properties, or I had them in front of me, I'd take a comprehensive view of all of the properties. Most likely, you could probably get more office space out of it, better office space out of it, and a more interesting development. But instead of kind of, you know, picking away at this in small, this driveway, that driveway, this variance, that variance, we're ending up with kind of a bit of a mess of decisions made long ago about whether they're individual homes, or whether they comply, or whether they're non-conforming and so forth, there really is, you'd almost like to wipe the slate clean and come in with a comprehensive plan that was interesting and addressed the issues that were in front of the neighbors. Because I don't think picking away at this is going to really do it for anyone in the end.
Anybody down this end? Thoughts from anybody?
I think I still stand with trying to see what they can work out from a landscape and view, shed point, you know, first. In terms of the architecture, I think that a lot of that, we all have different opinions on architecture, and I think that we have to be respectful to everybody's opinion, but I would hope that if, if it still wants to maintain a residential look that, and maybe they have entertained how you can connect the buildings with less of a, with more of a breaking up in between of them. But again, that's the architect's job, and I think that possibly that could be worked into the conversation between the two parties. And possibly with the next presentation, we could find out a little bit more about how to address some of these concerns. I think we're just chipping away, like you said, at things without having a full answer in front of us.
Okay. Any questions?
No, thank you for your, all your comments and your attention and patience with us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
All right, next item on the agenda is old business? Any old business? It's like, any new business? If not, the meeting is adjourned.
Kathy, before you adjourn.
Yes, never mind.
If you could take a quick poll of the members, the next meeting is July 3rd.
I won't be here.
So.
Okay, there's two of us that won't be here.
I don't, I don't like to go to Texas.
Okay, three of us won't be here.
Because I believe that's what it's scheduled now. I had asked.
Can we change it?
I had asked Steve today if that was a possibility. I'll follow up with that. I just wanted to see where, what the board thought on that.
Good question, though. I'm glad you brought that up, because three of us are going to be out of the area.
All right, I'll follow up with staff on that tomorrow.
Okay. All right, thank you.
I'm adjourned.
Yes, we're adjourned.
I'm here right.
You're right. But I don't think you need a question.
You only need a second to leave the meeting.